Hello. All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna, before I call the meeting to order, I did pick up a sheet on if people signed in for speaking. If you want to make a citizen comment, we have two times at the beginning of the meeting and the end. You do not have to sign up. If you have not signed up and you choose to speak, you can do so after we get through this list. That's okay. So you, it's not, and no one is excluded, but this will be the order that we go if you sign up. So I'm gonna call meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for lunch. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Welcome, welcome, everybody. Nice to see some new faces. First up on our agenda is we have lots of new hires, so I'm going to, we're gonna go through the hires, administrators are going to introduce their candidate, we're gonna get through all of those, and then we will go through, and I know this is time-consuming, but I think everybody deserves their moment in the sun, I guess, or stars, to have their individual contract, what do I, what's the word, like, approved?
To be hired.
To be hired. There we go. So, I believe Rebecca Olson is up first.
Hi. Today I bring forth two candidates for Little Hornet lead teacher positions assigned to a Great Start readiness classroom. The first is Rebecca Vavowski. Rebecca is a graduate of Eastern Michigan University and has obtained her Michigan teacher certificate with her early childhood endorsement. Rebecca began her career, professional career, in a Great Start readiness classroom in Oakhamus, and has most recently worked as a MTSS paraprofessional in Discovery. She is returning to the early childhood field because that is her passion and is currently pursuing her master's degree. My second candidate is Ms. Samantha Morris. She is a recent graduate of Central Michigan University, where she obtained her bachelor's degree in early child development and learning. Samantha has previous classroom experience at MSU Laboratory Preschool, where she developed strong early childhood language skills and has developed a passion for the advocacy of young children and their families. It is with enthusiasm that I recommend both of these individuals for employment within the Little Hornet preschool program. I believe they possess the skills, knowledge, and professional mindset that will enhance our program and positively impact the students of Williamson Community Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Rebecca? Okay. Next, I believe, is...
I am bringing to the board three teachers for our building. The first one is Ms. Kimber Peterson. She comes to us from Central University and has her ba, her ma, her master's degree from Mary Grove College. Prior to coming to Discovery to teach first grade, she has experience teaching second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. She also has experience teaching Title I reading and the MTSS process. Through multiple references, I got glowing reviews on Ms. Peterson, mostly talking specifically about her ability to create relationships with students and her love for teaching. My second candidate is Ms. Lauren Van Slambrook. She will be teaching first grade as well at Discovery Elementary. She is a graduate of Central Michigan University and experienced her student teaching in a pre-kind, a pre-kindergarten classroom. She also has a paraprofessional experience. She is described as a hard worker, prepared, and a naturally gifted teacher. And my last candidate is Ms. Abby Black. Abby is a Williamson graduate and comes to us from Michigan State University. She completed her student teaching in first grade at Challenger Elementary in Howell. She is described as calm, a team player, and very technological, technologically savvy, in that she has a strength in building relationships with her students. All three candidates went through a very comprehensive interview process, and we are excited to have them on our team.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, and I think probably none.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to bring forth for your consideration tonight, Mr. Jordan Williams. Jordan was a candidate for our opening that we have in elementary fit for life. So, Jordan has his bachelor's degree from Spring Arbor University in physical education and the health sciences. He has spent the last nine years teaching at Cole Academy, both at their main campus as well as their newer Eastside campus. As the first and only physical education teacher that they've had as a part of their program, he really developed that program from the ground up. In speaking with both of his administrators from both buildings, they describe him as a real team player, someone who's really willing to step forward and do, help in any way that he can. The thing that really sort of sounded particularly of interest to our hiring committee was not only what Jordan had to say, but also what his references had to say about his philosophy, which is very much in line with our fit-for-life philosophy of wanting students to feel that they're in a very inclusive space, that it's not about competition, it is about cooperation, it's about each student finding ways that they can be physically active, and so that we're really setting that stage for a healthy lifestyle from a young age. We are delighted that he is here with us this evening, and I give him my highest recommendation for your consideration. Any questions before I step away? Thank you.
Okay. So without any questions, we're going, oh, no.
I know, we have quite a number, right?
No, no. I said that, and I was like, not thinking, so I'm sorry.
So our secondary team, we went extensively through the resumes and an interview process, where we were able to select Mrs. Cassandra Everhart as our candidate to recommend to the school board. As noted in her resume, she has extensive experience with teaching, as well as a degree, Bachelor of Arts degree, and a Master of Arts degree from Michigan State University. Professionally, Mrs. Everhart has more recently taught at the Pathfinder Middle School in Howell, but before that, she taught between preschool and 12th grade, which is a unique fit, right? But really landed in that middle school area. Outside of the classroom, she's participated in many opportunities of leadership, but includes things like chairperson at the middle school in Howell, and served on their leadership team. One reference described Mrs. Everhart as a wonderful teacher who is a great collaborator and team player. She connects well with colleagues and students in meaningful and powerful ways. She was also described as an amazing teacher who can make it possible for all students to learn. It is our recommendation that Mrs. Everhart be placed in a 7th grade social studies position at the middle school. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. So, again, we're gonna take each one at a time, and now we'll wrap them, and go congratulate our candidates when they're done. I also do wanna say, I understand, so for some of our administrators and new hires, that there is an early morning to report to tomorrow with all kinds of fun activities, like hear the band, and use instruments, and dancing is gonna take place. But it is another morning, we have a lot on the agenda, so please, it will not put our families after we're done, if you would like to access that meeting. So, do I have a motion for Rebecca Vavowski? Vavowski?
I'll take the first one. This is always something that we like to jump on, because this is truly one of our favorite things that we like to do, is to welcome new hires to our district, so I'll take the first one. I would take a motion that the Williamson Board of Education hire Ms. Rebecca Vavowski as a lead teacher in Kids Corner in Little Hornets Program within the Great Start to Readiness Program classroom.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, can I have a motion for Samantha Morris?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education hire Ms. Samantha Morris as a lead teacher in the Kids Corner in Little Hornets Program within a Great Start to Readiness Program classroom.
I have a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Kimber Peterson?
Take a motion that Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Kimber Peterson to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Kimber Peterson?
Take a motion that Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Kimber Peterson to begin with the 2021-2022 school year. For a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Kimber Peterson?
Take a motion that Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Kimber Peterson to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Lauren Van Slambrook?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Lauren Van Slambrook to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Lauren Van Slambrook?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Lauren Van Slambrook to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Any opposed? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Kimberly? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Jordan Williams?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Jordan Williams to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Lauren Van Slambrook?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Lauren Van Slambrook to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Lauren Van Slambrook?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Lauren Van Slambrook to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Lauren Van Slambrook?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Lauren Van Slambrook to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion for Jordan Williams?
I make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a probationary teacher contract for Jordan Williams to begin with the 21, 2021 to 2022 school year.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, can I have a motion for Cassandra Everhart?
Make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a teacher contract for Cassandra Everhart to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, can I have a motion for Cassandra Everhart?
Make a motion that the Williamson Board of Education approve a teacher contract for Cassandra Everhart to begin with the 2021-2022 school year.
For a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and again, you may take your exit if you would like. Actually, we're gonna... Oh. Any of the reserved chairs, you are more than welcome to sit at the end of this time. Okay.
And we do have an overflow room, and just because you're in the other room doesn't mean that you can't come in to make a public comment, so we just wanna make that very clear, that even if you are in the other room, please come in for a public comment. We have public comment groups right now, and then again at the end of the meeting at last.
So before we get started with citizen comments, I do wanna thank, we have had, many people submit letters, phone calls and stuff to us, we have read all of those, some of you have asked for some clarification, or wanting board clarification. Those are really hard to respond to, because the board is made up of seven people, so when one person responds, they're really just responding for themselves, not the board, and this has not yet been discussed at the board level. So responding to some of your questions was not, would not have been appropriate at that time, because the board has not had a discussion about this, this is what we're doing tonight. So I did wanna say that. We also have received lots of information from Allen, from Linda Vale, other people are sending stuff, which we have been reviewing, so I do appreciate everyone who has voiced their concerns, and obviously, we're gonna hear some tonight. Out of a citizen comment, you have three minutes. The first part of citizen comments can only be on items that are on the agenda. If you do not have a chance to sign up, you can do that after I hit the last person, this will be the order we go. I will give you a one-minute warning, and then wrap you up in three minutes, and the alarm will go off. Any questions?
Is there a way that you could maybe take the mask off, where I could understand you a little bit better when you talk?
Very hard to understand.
Yes, really hard.
We could hear any of the former speakers.
So I will talk, I will talk a little louder. I do get, the mask issue is obviously a little bit emotional, and is gonna be a debate. I got my mask on, because it's a personal decision. My husband has to have some surgery in a couple months, and we've been recommended to have it, so I'm choosing to wear it. I will talk louder, so you guys can hear me. Again, this is citizen comments, you have three minutes. The first part of citizen comments for this meeting will need to be about an agenda item. If you have something that's not on the agenda, you have a second part for citizen comments, you can come to the end of the meeting, and that's open to anybody and everything. We will follow the list that people signed up for order. If you have not signed up on this list, you are more than welcome to have citizen comment at the end of this last person on this list. I will set a timer, you have three minutes, I will give you a one-minute warning, and then I will cut you off at the end of three minutes. Okay? All right. First one up is Dan Reins. And if you can give me one minute to get my timer ready. And if you can state your name and address, I believe, that's it? Yes?
My name is Dan Reins, I live at 923 William Street. I have three boys, two are elementary school students, a second grader, and an incoming kindergartner. I, I got the COVID mitigation sheet on the, in one of the Facebook groups. I was surprised when it didn't come out in the packet we received last week, but I saw it in the Hornet Hive, and was looking through it, and it seemed, some of it seems a little vague, I would like to see it flushed out a little bit on what, what, what gets us into each one of the sections. You know, I know right now, we have fairly low community spread in Ingham County, we have very few cases in the hospital, so does that put us in the first step? Where, where would that put, those are some questions that I have. On the, on the masks, I, I'm, my, my going, my second grader, then a first grader, came home last year, and would tell me about kids who would go on recess, all the way to the edge of the playground, to hide from recess aids, to get a break from their mask. That to me, that, that to me is a problem. No, no kid should, should, should feel the need to do that. We have, as adults, while working in the building, we've all had a choice in whether or not we've received a vaccine. If you've received the vaccine, they all have very high rates of effectiveness, so our youngest students should not be a danger to you. They, they just shouldn't, and you've had your choice. You've made your choice, and if you would like to change your choice, that's up to you, but our, our youngest students should not be forced to, to wear a mask for seven hours a day, or, or more, because we're, we're worried about spread to adults. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer Anarelli.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Anarelli, 2411 White Pine Drive, and I have five children, I've got three grad, that have graduated from here, I also have an 11th grader and a 4th grader, and my daughter did not come to school at all last year, and socially, I think that's pretty sad, because she did not want to, it was just really hard, the whole situation was hard, anyway, I wrote a letter. Dr. Spina, on the school board, I stand before you tonight to once again implore you, to implore you to please keep the decision of mask-wearing up to individual families. Every family should have the right that God gave us, to raise our children healthfully and happily, as we see fit. It is a family, if a family is very afraid of the virus, then they can choose to have their child wear a mask. If a family wants their child to breathe fresh air and not to live in fear, then they can make the decision to not wear a face mask. The flu in 2019 killed more kids than the last 18 months of COVID, and you didn't make mask, kids mask up then. Why not? The bacteria growth alone on masks and the health risks associated with mask-wearing far outweighs the threat of COVID-19. Kids need fresh oxygen, period. Breathing in through a mask for eight hours a day has adverse reactions. For example, hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, activation of stress response, a rise in stress hormones, fatigue, headache, decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illnesses, chronic disease, and premature death. I do not feel like it is my right to tell you not to mask up your child, nor do I think it is your right to tell me to cover my child's face. Thank you, and I know I've read, I've written lots of letters, so thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Nadine, are you gonna put this right voice, for, for?
Nadine Vors, 2260 East Grand River Avenue, I'm a Williamson resident and a mother of three. I feel urged to speak up about masks. I'm very thankful that we can hopefully start the school year with face masks only being recommended and not required. We've all heard, if you cared about other people, you'd protect them by wearing a mask. We're missing a few things with that, mainly evidence, data, science, common sense, and basic human decency. Our district has made a decision with presenting no facts at all, and I'd like to share some with you. COVID poses almost no risk to our kids. Point 008% of them have died. What about the flu? The CDC estimated 480 kids died from the flu between the 2018-19 season. That's more than have died from COVID in over a year and a half. None of us suggested we mask our kids then. Research published in JAMA revealed that carbon dioxide levels in children wearing masks were three times the safe cutoff levels. These harmful levels were achieved in just three short minutes. Schoolchildren are wearing masks for roughly 270 minutes a day. The risk of contracting this virus, giving it to the teacher, and the teacher actually dying is astronomically small. August 14th, Fauci came out saying, hopefully, hopefully masking our kids won't have long-lasting medical impact. So there was a study in Florida, which proved counties with mask mandates did worse. This study included population density. States with mask mandates had 27 out of 100,000 cases. States without had 17 out of 100,000. So this proves these mandates actually do little to nothing to stop COVID. So let me explain why these mask mandates do nothing to stop the spread. Let's think of the size of one micron. Visualize a piece of your hair. One micron is 4,000 times smaller than the area of a human hair. COVID is less than the size of one micron. If you think something that is 4,000 times smaller than the area can't get through your mask, you are highly misled.
You have one minute.
No one ever said it's okay to put masks on children. A child's mask is a security blanket for you, and not them. There are so many studies confirming the ineffectiveness of masks for COVID, and confirming their negative health effects. It's time to lower the fear, it's time to look at the science and data out there. I strongly believe this district should not be mandating anything, at any point, because it should be up to us parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Schaefer.
Yes, hello. Monica Schaefer, 1691 Osprey Avenue, Williamson, Michigan. As you know, I have parents in the school system. For just a couple questions on beforehand, is that I see that this is a discussion item. So my question is, is, I, I have to say, why was it put out to the people, to all the parents, if it was just a discussion item that's coming before the board tonight? So usually, and I've been to a lot of board meetings, usually discussed, you discuss it, and, at one meeting, and then you vote for it at a next meeting, and then it's put out to the parents. So that's my only question, is why was this put out so early, before discussion? A second question is, I know this, this is just discussion tonight, so this will not be voted on tonight. So that's my only question is, why was this put out so early, before discussion? A second question is, I know this, this is just discussion tonight, so this will not be voted on tonight. And I hope that with two members gone tonight, that we're not going to set aside the rules and we're going to say that this has to be put out there now because parents need to know. So I hope with two board members missing, we won't set aside the rules because I was at so many board meetings where Scott Gaffner got reamed on for setting aside the rules. And so I'm assuming that, that won't be an issue tonight. Another question that I have when I look at the COVID mitigation plan, that if an unvaccinated child is, is, I don't know, as you would say, set aside for 10, 14 days, what type of schooling are we going to do with that child? Like, we have all this new, we have all these new cameras, we have all this new stuff, all this new technology that just costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Are we going to, for those children, start up that system and allow them to have the same educational rights at home? Or are we just going to say, you're out for 10 days and you just have to call your teacher and talk to him? Are we going to have that same educational rights for them that we've spent so much money on? And then, fourth, wonderful, I still got a minute. Because I just want to say, I am so proud of all these people that are here to speak. There are so many new parents here. There are new people that are concerned. And we are all concerned, but we all want choice. We all want choice. And if you want your child to wear a mask, absolutely, wear a mask. 100%, double mask. Do anything you want, but you have to give the parents a choice with it. And I know that on the video, for all the, all the parents that are on this video, I'm, I'm assuming that there's hundreds of parents on this video right now. You cannot see how many parents are standing behind me. This room is filled with parents standing behind me, concerned parents, so that want to have their children have a choice. And I love what Dan Rhines said. We all have the ability to get vaccinated. We all have the ability as adults to be vaccinated. Don't hold that against our children. Thank you.
Elliot Berger. Thank you. All right. Is the timer started?
I'll start it when you, when you start your first one.
All right, good evening. I'm Elliot Berger. I'm going to be a junior at Williamson High School. And I'd like to start off by saying that I agree with the decision of Williamson Community Schools to make face masks optional. However, I've heard that it might become mandatory and for many reasons, I believe it should remain a choice. One is that masks are pretty inefficient, and I have some studies that prove this. A study by the American College of Physicians showed that of the 4,862 participants who completed this study, 1.8% of those who wore masks and 2.1% who didn't wear, wear masks got COVID, and in such a large study, 0.3% is not much of a difference. The European CDC also stated that surgical face masks and non-medical face masks both have low to moderate efficiency and that they had little evidence to make the claim off of. Also, the World Economic Forum put out a size comparison chart that stated the size difference between particles. And smoke particles were on average bigger than COVID particles, with the smoke particles ranging from 0.4 to 0.7 micrometers and the COVID particles ranging from 0.1 to 0.5 micrometers. When the wildfires were going on, the CDC stated that the cloth face masks offer little protection against wildfire smoke. So if it offers little protection against the smoke particles, how is it going to do much against the COVID particles that are even smaller? And another reason masks should remain a choice is that the risk for kids and teens is very low, and it's also very low for adults, especially if you're healthy. As of the 12th of this month, children COVID cases made up about 14.4% of the total cases, while they make up 22% of the population. And of the 43 states that reported, seven reported no child deaths. Of others reported that the deaths accounted for 0.25% or less of the deaths. Another reason for choice is that it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. Many people may feel the best way to protect themselves is to wear a mask, which is and always should be their choice. However, some people are better off without wearing masks. I personally got dry throats after I wore a mask for school and basketball, and I was very fatigued after. I would almost always wake up with dry throats and, believe me, I'm a runner. I drink so much water. And so I was healthy, but the mask actually made me less healthy. There are also studies coming out about how kids who wear masks for long periods of time are breathing in way high CO2 levels. It is all, it's always been one's own responsibility to stay healthy and do what's best for their health personally. You know best how to take care of you, so I believe we should continue to allow people to decide what is best for themselves. Thank you.
Joella, Joellen, am I saying this right?
I'm not required to give you my address. I live in Livingston County. I'm a Williamson grad, and I lived here for 20-plus years. Joellen Pizarchik. I want to talk about the science a little bit. I have here 47 studies that confirm the ineffectiveness of masks for COVID and 32 that confirm their negative health effects. These are a compilation of peer-reviewed, evidence-based studies, some of which were even conducted by the CDC and the NIH among numerous other scientific authorities. We've already covered the size of the microns of the COVID virus versus the masks. Even the best surgical mask cannot filter out particles smaller than 3/10 of a micron. Putting a mask on a child is like putting up a chain-link fence to keep out mosquitoes. But I want to talk about the harm to children. As a former teacher and child development person, I'm very concerned about that. The elevation in CO2 levels has been mentioned. It impairs cogni-, cognition, and according to cognitive neurologists, has the potential to cause long-term brain damage. Other bacteria in the environment concentrate in the mask and expose children to other bacteria such as staph, streptococcus, influenza. They impair oxygen exchange necessary to breathe and expel toxins out of your lungs. And the harmful, harmful impact may be intensified in high-risk categories such as children with diabetes, autoimmune disorders, asthma, et cetera. The psychological harm from wearing masks is obvious. Peer ostracism, feelings of being constrained or coerced, these are all psychologically harmful to children. Learning deficits are exacerbated by communication impediments when facial expression and word articulation cues are not observable. They are particularly harmful for children with speech, hearing, or other communication deficits. I'm not going to cover the CO2. I'd like to point out that under Michigan law, parents have a right. Revised School Code Act of 451 from 1976, 310, 380.10, the rights of parents and guardians to direct the care and education of their children. I won't read the whole thing. Also, from the Revised School Code, Section 380.1307, which you might want to consult with your attorneys on. The state policy under Section 1307 shall include a clear statement that all of the following practices are prohibited for school personnel in public schools of this state under all circumstances, including emergency situations. It lists 12 items, one cognitive, corporal punishment, deprivation of basic needs, child abuse, and several others. Letter H, any restraint that negatively impacts breathing. Thank you for your time.
Christine McGoren.
Hi, I'm Christine McGoren. I have one child attending the high school. First, I wanted to say thank you to everybody who's commenting tonight. Appreciate your input. It's nice to hear there's people who think like I do. I mostly have questions for the board. I know this is a comment period, so I'm not sure when I can get my questions answered. My first question is, where can I find a report of the survey results about masking? Also, what method was used to ensure the results were accurate and people could not vote more times than they should have? Because I tried it and I was able to vote more than once. Number two, who is appointed to the district leadership team that collaborated on the COVID mitigation plan? Are they the ones who sent the survey? The survey was sent out listing not anybody who was sending it. What gives the district leadership team the authority to dictate mask wearing? What happens if it is dictated to wear a mask and people don't wear a mask? I'm also requesting that a vote not be taken on this issue until my questions are answered. I would like to see it be up to the parents to decide whether their children wear a mask or not. I would also like to propose that since we are able to do virtual learning, that parents, if they are afraid to send their children to school, be allowed that option to have their children do online learning at home. Thank you very much.
Camden Johnson.
Hi, I'm Camden. I wrote my address down on there. I would like to say a few things tonight. I would first like to say that I'm a junior at Williamson High School. And the topic tonight is a question of masks. Should they be forced or not? I am 100% against the forcing of masks on any student in the Williamson Community Schools. I have a few reasons. The first regards to the actual necessity of them for students. According to the CDC website, on a given day, per 100,000 kids ages 0-17, there's a 37% chance that one kid will be admitted to the hospital. You can imagine what this means for a student body the size of Williamson. It means there is an insanely small chance that even one student will be affected by COVID, enough to be admitted to a hospital. I know that when I have a mask on, it is noticeably harder for me to concentrate. It is the same with many other students I know. I also find that social interaction is not as enjoyable when I have cloth over my face. This negatively impacts social interaction, which is very important for high schoolers' mental health. So I ask you, is it really worth the negative impact on a majority of students' mental health to force masks? I ask that you make the choice to allow the students to do what you've been teaching them to do every year they go to school. That is, to let them make their own choices that will allow them to lead their most successful life they can. Thank you.
Lori Janicek, I live with him. A community member, parent. And first, I know Williamson Community Schools to be generous and to be evidence-based, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the thought that went into coming up with a COVID mitigation plan. And I guess part of that, like those compliments said, I'm a little bit confused about why we're, we're here tonight. You've heard a lot of evidence, both to the detriments of masks for kids and also the, the transmission rate, the, the very low difficulty rate that children, that children have. I too am interested in those survey results, and that might be a point of discussion tonight. And I really do hope that as an evidence-based school, that this conver-, this conversation will remain grounded in verifiable information. That hi, I have really high hopes, I guess, that critical thinking skills will be modeled by us as adults. And probably one of the healthiest questions we can ask one another is, how did you arrive at that conclusion? So that's really what I'm looking for. That's my request as you discuss this. Because we hear a lot of soundbites, we hear a lot of, there's just a lot of a lot of around this topic, and, and it's sad. And I think we've all been affected in different ways. And what it comes down to, there's not a mandate. Right now, there's, there's a recommendation, opinions. And if you've ever been in a court of law, it, it's amazing, isn't it, how you can have two experts come down on different sides of a topic, but amazingly, they come down on the side of the person who paid them. So still trying to figure that one out. But there is a lot of that, that, you know, that's going on right now. But the thing about opinions is they can't all be equally right. It's got to be grounded in something, and that is what I'm looking for from this board. And I've heard things like, but if masks only save one life. I think somebody mentioned that today. It, it sounds virtuous, but it's a foolish way to make policy decisions. There's a reason that we have averages. You're always going to have outliers and exceptions, and it helps control for that. So we could make decisions that benefit the most amount of people. I've also heard the theory masks don't hurt anyone. But really, I mean, I think about this, Sarah and Nancy with your developmental background too with kids. I think we are hurting kids. Imagine being scared of the air, of other people, and this mask is a constant reminder of what's going on. That's a really big deal, and I don't think we know the extent of that. And I think if I had come before the board in 2019 and said, I've got a really great idea that's going to help all of the Williamson athletes, let's do oxygen deprivation training. You would have looked at me like I was a nut. And here we are. So please, help me understand the conclusions that you come to and not just, we want to look like Ogamist or Grand Ledge. I mean, please, let's be better than Keeping Up With The Joneses and have evidence-based decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I want to thank Williamson teachers who continue to put their students ahead of their own safety and well-being. I have a whole thing, spill more data about CDC. I don't think that's going to make a difference. All right, we keep hearing about personal responsibility. The idea of personal responsibility is wrong, the, the way we take it. It's about what's in it for me. If you're really interested in personal responsibility, it is about, it has to do with how I impact and affect you. If I'm unvaccinated and could be an asymptomatic spreader, it is on me to do everything in my ability to make sure I don't hurt you. It is me taking personal responsibility for my actions and self to protect others. Wearing a mask is taking that personal responsibility. So I would request that Williamson schools look at the spread of COVID with the Delta variant, given that number of cases in children has increased 30% in the last week, that we require masks and protect our children and fulfill our mission to educate kids. Thank you.
Emily Sutton.
Emily Sutton Smith, and this is my son Milo. And Milo wanted to say something.
Hi, I'm Milo Leopard. I live in Williamson. I've been a student at Williamson Community Schools since kindergarten. I'll be starting fifth grade this year. Last year, I didn't get to go to fourth grade, and I don't want that to happen again two years in a row. I'm really looking forward to seeing all my friends and being with my teacher and being interactive with my friends. I really think you should require masks because masks really do work. If I was in school around a bunch of kids who weren't wearing masks, I think I would be really scared. Not just about myself, but my friends and family too. I think I would be scared before going in because I would be worried that only a few kids would be wearing masks, and that wouldn't be very good. I think that I wouldn't be totally up to learning if I was worried about myself, my friends, and my family. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Milo. Very much.
I'm hoping I'm going to get this right. Lyssa.
I have a mask and I want to quit and I want to leave. I want to call the review. So my name is Lisa Lesnian. I'm one of the many conservatives about making the use of masks optional. I respect the idea of virtual. And in COVID-19, everything has been a learning experience. You always mention that you're not experts in this topic, but you will listen to the professionals. Well, this is the time. Over the past few weeks... Over the past few weeks, Dr. Fauci, who is a professional in the White House, the CDC, the Michigan Health Department, the Inham County Health Department, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, all released their guidance for schools recommending that all students over two years old, along with the staff, wear masks, regardless of whether they have been vaccinated or against COVID-19 or no. Regardless of transmission levels in the area, the CDC released this information on July 27, 2021. You are sitting in those chairs. For me, that is proof that you care for the well-being of all students, but a maybe new time and effort. There is still time to change and do everything that is in our power to protect the health of our students and our very hard-working teachers and staff, as well as their families. I also know that no matter what decision you make, that not everybody will be satisfied. But guess what? This study is not about happiness or the evil. It's about doing the right thing and helping to avoid the transmission of COVID-19 and the Delta strain of kids who still are not eligible to be vaccinated. With kids 12 years and older, the only tools that we have is to keep safe social distance between them, washing their hands and using masks. Please, listen to science and don't wait for the statistics to tell you the truth with increases of cases in the Williamson schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of my list. Is there anyone else that would like to speak here instead of the camera? If you could say your name and address.
Yes ma'am. My name is Julie Petrick and I live at 3301 Raleigh Road. Thank you so much for the ability to speak and thank you for everyone, all the other parents for coming tonight and the students too. I really like hearing from everyone. I think it's important that we all get to give our opinion on this topic. My daughter is starting kindergarten this year and as such, like the vast majority of people in her building, Eleanor is not going to be eligible for a vaccine when she starts school. With cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, again, on the rise in the country as a whole, but also in Michigan and Inham County, not requiring masking for at least the unvaccinated children and staff that choose to be unvaccinated, I believe is like playing Russian roulette with my child's life. Masks have proven to be a relatively non-disruptive COVID mitigation strategy, but the efficacy of their use is when they are worn by the infected, not by the potential receiver of the virus. It is because of this fact that a recommendation of masking is not an adequate substitute for requiring masks while cases are on the rise and vaccinations are unavailable for children under 12. The experts at the CDC and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services both recommend that schools start the year with universal masking without regards to vaccination status, a recommendation that our neighbors are following. A mask mandate will help ensure that we are able to remain outbreak-free and continue with in-person instruction.
You have wonders?
Which I know we all think is important and everyone in this room can agree on is the most important thing. Finally, for those that would argue that COVID is not harmful to children, I would encourage them to read the current information on the Delta variant, but furthermore, I would encourage them to remember that discomfort that results from wearing a mask is not worth the long-term illness or death of a child, mine or theirs, or any child in our community. Thank you, and I ask that this board reconsider a mask mandate.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will have second opportunity at the end of our meeting. Celebrations, Adam.
All right, well, first of all, tomorrow's a big day. It marks the start officially of the 21-22 school year. And I'll tell you, the last year, last two years, has been a wild ride for all of us that work here in the schools. I know the journey is not yet over, but it is with just a great sense of excitement and a real joy in terms of being able to see, starting tomorrow, our staff be back together again to celebrate and start a new school year for the first time in a year and a half. It's been a very challenging year and few years. I know we did that, but I can't wait to see everybody tomorrow. So, celebrations. The first thing is, the biggest celebration for all of us as educators is that our students are going to be back to person this year. There's, just like our staff, there's some students that we have not had a chance to see in 18 months or more. That's very painful for us. I know we tried to do the best we can through some valid efforts in terms of remote destruction last year. People just did some amazing things, but nothing replaces having kids in school where you can interact with them and try to make a positive difference in their lives. I know, once again, another thing we're very much looking forward to. This summer, there were some great things that occurred and I want to give a couple shout-outs to a couple groups in particular. Every year, our custodial maintenance team is, just does a phenomenal job in terms of their upkeep of the building, not only in terms of upkeep, but also adding and improving things. And I'll talk about that a little bit when we get to our summer project update, see some of the things they did and some of the things that they collaborated on to improve our facilities for this year for our students. I also want to publicly recognize members of our food service team. These individuals, over the last 18 months, have served, have provided almost 165,000 meals to children in the Williamson community. Their efforts have just been incredible. I was out this summer with them on one of the Tuesday distribution days where it was a horrendous thunderstorm. We've had some of those this summer for sure. It was right in the middle of the day when folks were coming in and they were out there completely soaked, but still bringing meals in from the high school out the folks' vehicles as they drove through. And it's a group of people that really works behind the scenes. They don't get a lot of credit, recognition, but they are such an invaluable part to what we do and perhaps no more so than this past year when they fought valiantly against food and security for so many children, families in the Williamson community. So, all the credit in the world to everything that they have accomplished. And then lastly, I just want to note the hard work of our administrative team. I think we saw this evening, an outstanding slate of new teachers that are starting here in the district. This has been an extremely challenging two-week period in terms of staffing our district. We thought we had everything good to go and then we've had some unanticipated changes. They recruited just an immense amount of talent, being folks that are coming in with double-digit years of teaching experience that are leaving, taking pay cuts, sit on the air, believing in what we do in our district. And very proud of the administrative team for thanking those folks, recruiting them into our district and all the things that those teachers will bring to our students for many, many years to follow. So, that's kind of the overview. Like I said, I'll touch in greater detail here in a few minutes on the facilities update, but pending any questions from the board, that's our celebrations for this evening.
Do I have any questions?
No.
Okay.
All right, so this is easier for me to stand here so I can see this. So this starts with the hornet statue outside of the high school and there's additional pictures of this, but I just want to kind of, this is one of the first things that folks see as they come in, come into the district specifically at the high school. And as you'll see in a few slides, the foundation of this was in quite a bit of disrepair. So it's a small thing, but it's an important thing. It's very symbolic of our district, obviously, and this was completely rebuilt, the foundation. You'll kind of see what it used to look like here in a few slides. So, as the board knows, over the last several years, one of the main focus areas for improvement in the district has been replacing roofs. This summer marked the final phase of the roof replacement at the high school, the last three sections. Unfortunately, these were above some of the areas that a lot of folks used to include the pool and the golf performing arts center. But the good news is that this is now done and this completes the high school roof replacement process. Over the last several years, we have replaced roofs now in their totality across all district facilities except for Discovery Elementary. That's the last, and the newest roof of all of those that needed to be replaced, but obviously its turns coming up here rather quickly and that will be addressed in the next year or two. Okay, thank you. So, one of the, one of the great needs that has been identified by many people in our community and justifiably so over the last several years was the condition of our tennis courts. This summer, we initiated a plan to resurface them and as you can see from the photograph, the improvement speaks for itself. I do want to emphasize that this is not a long-term solution. We understand that due to the way the courts were constructed originally, that this is going to take a larger overhaul to completely repair them permanently. Unfortunately, just the way the ground underneath the courts is, has, was set when they were built, has led to decay of the things that are underneath of it and then the rest of the court will continue to settle and you'll see those cracks form. That's going to be an extremely expensive, long-term investment, but in the short term, we were able to put forth this resurfacing project over the course of the summer with significant improvements. Last spring, all new nets were bought for the courts as well and so this is going to be a much safer and just all-around better facility for our students and our community moving forward. This was a result, I think we heard before about how generous the community is with Williamson and with our schools and so this is an outstanding example of that. So we had an anonymous donor last spring who pledged $150,000 to renovate one of the research labs at the high school. So you have a bit of a before and after shot there of what it used to look like and what it looks like now. It's about 80% done. Actually, tomorrow morning, Steel Case will be coming in and delivering the furniture for that. And so as you know, over the last several years, we've also invested in flexible seating classrooms. This will be another example of that, although it'll be also a much larger, safer place for students to conduct research in their various courses at the high school. The picture doesn't do it justice. You know, when you get a chance to go in there and see what it looks like, it's just, it's phenomenal. I mean, everything's been changed from the ceiling tiles to the floor, I mean, everything. So it's going to look just amazing when it's completed here in the next few days. There's been what I would describe as a painting extravaganza that's been done by our custodial maintenance teams over the summer. They've basically been painting everything. Last year, when things were shut down throughout last summer, they repainted many of the hallways. That work continues now, actually into individual classrooms. The vast majority of classrooms at the high school and the middle school have been repainted. The central office lobby, the hallway leading through Kids Corner Little Hornets, and all the offices in the central office complex have been repainted. And so it's just a nice aesthetic upgrade as you walk through the buildings, you can really tell the difference. And so there'll be a lot of teachers coming into their classrooms that things look bright and clean and new and again, just kudos to that group for all their hard work over the summer. Again, a lot of smaller things that were done that folks may or may not notice. The bus loop outside of the elementary campus was in disrepair and that has been fixed over the course of the summer. Again, like I was referring to previously, the statue base, as you come into the high school, was in pretty bad shape and now has been completely rebuilt. New carpet throughout the buildings continues to be a priority. It's a very systematic approach, room by room, over one, you know, a few rooms a year at each building, we're kind of making continuous progress on that. This summer, the high school, or I'm sorry, the middle school office just down the hall here had new carpet put in, there's also new furniture. Hopefully, coming in, we've had a bit of a supply issue with that, but it should be here in the next couple of weeks, if not for the first day of school. A lot of landscaping improvements have been done, going all the way back to spring break. Mr. Tom Hampton's church came to the middle school over the course of the summer and did a lot of the exterior landscaping, so it was not all our custodial maintenance team, but again, a community effort and pride in what those buildings look like and how they represent the community. So this is a roll-up of the projects that took place over the summer. There's a couple of things that just happened even after I completed the presentation. The lighting, LED lighting at the golf was installed at the very end of last week, last Friday. The walk-in freezer at the middle school, again, that's something that's just due to supply issues that are kind of confronting us across the board right now. That's backordered, but it has been purchased and we're hoping that'll show up here in the near future. And then just the list of smaller projects, some of which I touched on, that came out of various department and building budgets. So that concludes the overview, pending any questions from the board.
It all looks so great.
Thank you. Well, a lot of hard work from a lot of people and as I mentioned before, we really appreciate everything they've done. Yes, Amanda?
I don't know if you know it, I'm sorry I didn't get to reach out earlier, but what happened to the storm drains?
Well, the storm drains have been kind of collapsing and so it's something that a lot of people don't see.
In the parking lots?
Yeah, in the parking lots.
Yes, okay, I didn't notice that, so I was hoping that's a little less.
Yeah, so especially at the high school, I think they're more noticeable, but those have been repaired. There were a couple done over a few years ago and then an additional few this summer.
Thanks.
It all looks great and I know that some of us were able to go to the Thank You Bar field that we held for our maintenance and custodial staff, but truly, from this board and this community, it is a small crew, but they do wonders. I mean, other districts have so many more people that do far less than what our very dedicated group does and so we truly thank them because it is a list that grows throughout the year and a lot of it gets done within these two months. And some things have been put off because of the rain delays that we have had, but it all looks amazing and I'm very excited to welcome our students back. I'm very grateful.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to, wait till Eleanor gets back to the seat, someone else?
All right, so the first thing is just a memo to your attention indicating a wage increase that is part of the Kids Corner Little Hornets budget. They have already been working with our Director of Finance to find a way to attract those positions and that program more attractive to prospective employees and also recognize the hard work of folks that are already there. And I'd also be, I'm also pleased to announce that they've been able to do this without any tuition or rate increases for our students. Upcoming presentation and discussion items. At the next meeting on the 30th of August, two items in particular that are from board requests, first, and I don't even remember who requested it, which was back in the spring, but it was for an overview of our maintenance placement scores, and so we'll be providing those. And then the second is Scott Dymstra from Capital Area District Library will be here to provide additional information at the request of the Policy Committee on the Paddle Library Card Division. Pending any questions, that is upcoming presentation and discussion items.
Do I have any questions for Adam about that?
No.
Okay. Next, Board Committee Reports, which will be policy.
So the policy committee met a few weeks ago on August 2nd. We are bringing forth 10 policies that we reviewed and discussed, some of which needed extensive work through, others not as much. But I do want to also say that the 10 policies that we've convened, we also had the opportunity to discuss the links. to discuss the links to the layered COVID-19 mitigation plan. And again, I said this during the Policy Committee, but it was really nice to have an open discussion that was, it was just nice to have a really nice conversation about it. And pending your questions, that's all that I have.
Well, we'll move them right into discussion with all these policies.
Okay, I was going to, but then I didn't know. All right, so like I said, we do have 10 policies coming before you. I do want to direct your attention first to the Susan Loren Memorial Art Show. I do want to say that it is a recommendation from the committee that we take this policy out of the handbook. However, that's a big caveat to that, is that we are no way recommending that we get rid of it, because the Policy Committee fully supports this Susan Loren Art Show. It is what I consider an institution in our district, and it has been around for many decades. We just, when going through the handbook, we don't have any other policies on our books around such events that occur in our district, and that is the only reason why, or one of the main reasons why we suggest removing it. But again, we continue to support it. We find that the evolution of the Susan Loren Art Show, that began with the art show, that now has encompassed so much more, now it's the art show, and then hey, come listen to the band, listen to the choir. So it's a wonderful community event that we have. The other policy that I'd like to direct your attention to, that the committee spent some time on, that was Policy 8940, which is the student records. I'm sorry, I don't have it up on my board book. But under that policy number three, directory information, we spent some time going through that. And what we're trying to do is really look to consolidate some of the paperwork that parents get, because we know that the start of school, your parents get quite a bit of information, and some is redundant, where you fill out the same thing for one paperwork and you do the other. So we're trying to make it more streamlined. And so we've added to the directory information, which again is number three, under 3F enrollment status, for example, full-time or part-time, or we added Wilson Talent Center and Little Hornets and Kids Corner. But if there is anything else, we were brainstorming if there was anything else that we needed to add, so that is certainly up to the board's discretion as to whether or not to add or possibly eliminate anything from that, or any other part of the policy. I believe that's all that I wanted to direct your attention to at this time. Adam, did I leave anything out?
No, but if there's any other questions, Adam, so you can work through those during the discussion.
Great question. I'm sorry, I just know if you're ready.
Yeah, we're ready as possible. I know, I got nothing else. I was wondering, that was a really good review for a policy committee. I don't have anything else to add.
So I have a question. So are we looking at getting, like, it looks like the 8940, the copy we have is like all lined out, and then it goes to the directory information. Are we looking at?
Yeah, so it's in your board book, it's kind of backwards from the way it should be, so if you go down the page, and this is actually what I was looking at, if you go down to page 42, 41, page 41 in your packet, that's where the actual policy begins. And then if you scroll up, there's a proposed communication form that will go out to parents. That's built based on the specifics that the board puts into the actual policy. So the directory information, what you lay out there, essentially gets done, the case is put into the, the form that goes out to parents. And then there's an administrative guide as well, which starts on page 39, and that's more for administrative purposes, as a tool for us to help implement the policy. So what the board's actually discussing is the actual policy itself, but then I also wanted you to see the form that will tailor based on whatever the board is approving. And then again, there's an administrative guide that'll help you determine implementing the policy once it's through.
All right. Any other questions, or Julie, do you want to add anything from the committee?
Nope, I think she did real good to cover the forms.
Anybody else?
I just really appreciate you getting the legal opinion on the contract. The situation matters, Adam, thank you.
Yeah.
It's really nice. And again, I like how they, I don't know if they're the thought, that's how you do this, but it makes it really, really easy for me to read and understand what's coming up, what's coming in, and what the changes are, so whoever does that, thank you. Okay, next item, our COVID plan, and guess what everyone's waiting for. I'm going to just remind the board how we got here, that seems to be a question way back in, I mean, April or May, maybe even it's been June. There's lots of discussion about what was happening, where we were going into the summer, where we possibly could go for school. Knowing that things are changing, or have been changing very rapidly, we wanted to make sure that we had some things in place at that moment in time, and then we gave Adam some authority to make necessary changes as we move forward, based on we were going into summer. So Adam gathered a bunch of data. He worked with our leadership team, our administrators. He also worked with some, I think the Health Department, Linda Vale, came up with a chart that kind of basically says, we're in this category, if these things happen, we move into this category, and we move into this category. We got that out, wanted to get it out to parents so they could see it, make a decision. And at that time, that's where we were, and that's kind of where we were at the recommended mask, because that's where we were in that point in time. We, as board members, have been getting, obviously, lots of letters. We've been also getting a lot of new information. Linda Vale is coming out with a lot of new information, other Health Department, or not other Health Department, sorry, the Michigan Department of Health has come out with stuff, and I thought it might be time for us to have a conversation here before school starts, and kind of give Adam a sense of where we are all sitting right now. So with that, I get that this conversation can be emotional, and I'm going to ask that we just have some respectful conversations and not interrupt, and let us all hear what everybody's thinking. We have been given a lot of information since Friday, a lot of new things have come out since, on Friday, and we've kind of been vanguarding with a lot of just information. And I, and I know everybody's done a good diligence, even to the RPIs, so at this point, I'm going to open it up for conversation. Would anybody like to go first?
I can go first.
All right.
I mean, I kind of am in the, Julie?
Okay, sorry, can I also state that this has been through the Policy Committee? So for some of you who might not know, the Policy Committee has kind of done that step before we come to this board, and they have kind of had discussions around that. Again, they had a meeting, their last meeting, they discussed what was happening in that point in time, and now we're kind of at this different point in time. So I'm sorry, Julie, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're good, you're good. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about was, was the surveys. So I do have the surveys, so I wanted to kind of cover, because I think it's important that we know where the community stands. I know somebody was talking about the ability to change a survey because of the amount of votes, but we had, we have it come in, and so we ends up with a filtered survey. Adam goes through, there's, I don't know if it's a company or somebody, whoever does it for us, just kind of sees where there are anomalies, and then removes the anomalies and moves into a filtered kind of survey. So when we break it down to district filtered responses, we had 286 very comfortable, comfortable or neutral when it came to not wearing masks, with 117 very uncomfortable or uncomfortable. For Discovery Elementary School, we had 90 parents say that they were comfortable, very comfortable or neutral, not wearing masks, and 40 were uncomfortable or very uncomfortable. Explorer was 98 responses that were comfortable, very comfortable or neutral, and 51 that were very uncomfortable or uncomfortable. The middle school was 92 for comfortable, very comfortable or neutral, to 48 not comfortable or very uncomfortable. And so this is WHS as a whole, it came through as, or that was a little, now this, oh, this was a high school, which was 137 comfortable, very comfortable, neutral or no opinion of 137, and not comfortable or very not comfortable, 40. So that's kind of how those surveys, so community-wise, the people that responded to the survey, I mean, they are on board of saying, we want to make the decisions for our kids at every level. And I kind of feel weird that we're constantly, we are following, I mean, our current mitigation plan follows the CDC, the Ingham County Health Department, and the New Michigan Department, their requirement is recommending masks. I really feel this is their department to mandate masks. If they want us to wear masks, then they need to mandate that. I was looking at the Ingham County, the ISD workbook that came out, and I know that they're going to require masks at the Wilson Talent Center and what's going on at the ISD. What I was concerned about is, one of the reasons we were discussing about wearing masks was the ability to maybe not have to quarantine if you were wearing masks. But in that, it stated that if you were, even if you were wearing masks, if you were close contact, you had to quarantine for 10 days. So to me, I don't understand why we would, if we're trying to get kids in school and not have us quarantine, then it doesn't seem whether they're wearing masks or not. And I guess we need to get that verified, but I'm assuming Ingham County, the ISD would have that cleared with Linda Vale on whether or not they were going to be requiring quarantining of mask wearers. I kind of found the same thing, I went searching everywhere. What I found is a lot of articles from like 1985 of peer-reviewed studies of people that says that cloth and non-N95 masks really don't do a whole lot in the first place, which is kind of what everybody said. And most of the thing where they were talking about when they wanted them to be worn with children, World Health Organization, there was a Louisville study that came out, Stanford had a study that came out, the University of Louisville had a study that said they're finding some support the hypothesis that SARS-CoV-19 transmission rates decrease with greater mask use. So, and when you get into children, the World Health Organization says they would only require masks between ages six and 11 if there is widespread transmission in the area where they reside, the ability of the child to safely and appropriately wear their mask, which I think is kind of a concern at a kindergarten, first, second grade, that they could even wear their mask to where there was no air support coming out that would provide constant transmission prevention. Access to masks, which is well laundered and replacement masks, so then it would make me assume that we would have to provide the mask, because we don't know if the masks are going to come in launder daily, or if they're going to clean those masks daily. Adequate adult supervision and instruction to the child on how to put it on, take it off, and safely wear a mask, which gets us into the, of the teacher every day trying to get the kids to wear the mask properly. And then it talks about potential impact in that we have to consider the potential impact of wearing a mask on learning and psychosocial development in consultation with the parents, caregivers, and medical providers. So it says that there are specific settings and interactions where the child has other people who are at high risk developing serious illness such as elderly or underlying health conditions, which we won't really have in their, in their area of the school day. And what I found most is the Dr. Fauci kind of article, or where he came out on the news, and he said, and I quote, "Hopefully, this will be a temporary thing, temporary enough that it doesn't have any lasting negative, negative impact on them." So we've been into this for 18 months, and they have yet to really do a study on masking children, and the only reason why I think they have done that study is because they know that it's probably going to come out more detrimental than it is into the positive, or I think that they would have that study out. So that's all I've got to say, is I would suggest that we leave it the way it is, because the way it is follows the CDC, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and it gives the power to the parents to make that decision for their children. And that is going to fall on, on all things. As I told some people in the community, that means if your child is not wearing a mask, and they are forced to quarantine, and now you have to miss 10 days of work, or 12 days of work, and it's a financial burden on your family, you may send your child with a mask next time. Everybody has that responsibility in which they have to bear and decide what's best for their family, so that's my take.
Thank you. Anybody else want to go? Do you want me to go? You want me to go? I'll go. So this is really hard for me. We, I think Adam and I have spent hours and hours and hours talking about this way before, before school is even out, and it can be like radical. And I, I'm not sure, when we have our children who are going to come to school and being masked, and then go off to play their sports, go off to see their friends, go off into D and W, Target, Walmart, and they're not required to wear a mask, how that's going to help us? With that being said, I attended a, I don't know, Zoom thing with Linda Vale, and several of us pushed really hard on this issue, that if this is this dire, you need to mandate it. And her response was, I am mandating it, or I am recommending it, and I'm recommending you put your kids a mask. The kids need to be a mask. And several board members from several school districts around this county pushed back really hard on that, and she seems to have no problem in one-on-one or in small groups making that decision. Our Target Mad had a very long, three or four-hour open workshop meeting, and they came down five to two to let the local districts handle it. We don't want to take local control of what we're doing in the districts, which I find very ironic, that they have no problem telling us what our state tests have to be, our curriculum, how many days you have to be in school, but when it comes to masks, they're hands up. But it's dire, so put your kid in a mask. So for me, the way I look at this situation is, we have a group of kids, preschool through sixth grade, who are not eligible to get the vaccine. And if it means that they wear masks to keep our kids in school, because we cannot offer an online version, the state is saying that will not count, so we can't offer them. So if putting our youngest learners in masks to keep them in school if we haven't operated, I, I feel that that at least is a compromise versus the kids they can get in seventh through 12th grade, can get the vaccine, and they have it, and their parents have a choice for them, we're here they don't. So I get this is a soapbox for me. I am incredibly frustrated that our local, that not our local officials, that our legislative body, that our Health Department, everybody else is saying, we recommend them, we strongly, strongly recommend them, but we between the lines, we're telling you to put your kids a mask. And that's incredibly frustrating to me. So that is where I'm ending right at this moment.
Yeah, so I was also on the call, I was sitting in on the call that Nancy was referring to with Linda Vale and several other representatives from our ISD, and yes, this is extremely frustrating. We have the CDC saying we strongly recommend masks for K-12 education. We have MDA GHS saying we strongly recommend for K-12 education. And so I, when we met for our policy meeting, I'll back up, we did have a chance to look over this, and I did have a very honest conversation with the two other board members and Adam, saying, I have a real concern for our youngest learners that are not able to receive this vaccine. vaccine, to start school without this layer of protection." I felt, and I said it in the policy meeting, and I'll say it again tonight, I felt that we were successful last year due to parts of wearing masks to stay in school, the time that we were back. And so, listening in on that meeting last Wednesday, I was, I was glad that others pushed Director, Dr. Vale to, she's saying, "Listen to me, it is recommended, I am strongly," the emphasis on strongly was continued throughout what she was saying, that our K-12 students, preschool through K-12, wear masks. And I was surprised at how strong she came out saying that, and therefore, I, we said we're going to listen to our local health departments, and it seems that that is where she is recommending, and that is concurrent with M D A J H S came out last Friday, and that is concurrent with American Academy of Pediatrics, that came out, I believe, a week before, and the Center for Disease Control as well, so, it is where I'd like this to go. I, I agree with Nancy, I think that a compromise would be for those students that are not able to receive the vaccine, preschool through sixth grade, to be in masks.
I also had opportunities to speak with Linda Vale, not at the same meeting, but I was at another meeting with her, and in that meeting, I pushed her with the same questions, or very similar questions to what I heard you ask. To the extent that she called me afterwards, I didn't know she had my phone number, but she called me and found my phone number, and actually was very, very animated, I'll say, in regards to the fact that, her words were, "What more do I have to tell you and superintendents? The experts have told you what you need to know to make this decision. You sit on the school board, you sit as a leader in your school district, you need to make this decision at the local level, and we've given you everything from the M D A J H S, CDC, from my office, and beyond." She said, "I can, I, at this, she said, "At this point, I cannot mandate it?" She said, "I can, but," she said, "I'm not, I'm not mandating it," but she said, "I am strongly recommending it, and if you read between the lines, she is saying that every person should be masked, and it has a universal mask." Now, that being said, I agree with what Nancy and Sarah have said, my biggest concern, I've said this along the entire time, is of our youngest learners, that they have not had the opportunity to be able to get vaccinated, if they're going to get vaccinated. And I feel that at this time, for, for their safety, for all, all the safety of the youngest, until that vaccine is available, that we should mask up, at least at that pre-K five level.
Amanda?
Last but not least, ready? It's really clear our community is split, much as our vaccination rate is here in the county. And our, your opinions are so important to us board members, so, thank you for reaching out and sharing them. When we did take the survey with the parents, the information on the Delta variant was not out there, nor have we seen this large increase in cases of children that we have just since Friday, in which we've moved to a substantial number of cases category in Ingham County. So, we are looking at the most recent data, and I'm looking at the data, I am also influenced by the highest health authority, so, in our nation, that's the Center for Disease Control, in our state, it's the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, in our local county, it's the Ingham County Health Department. Those are the three highest levels in our local state and country, and they all say that students should be in masks in schools. So, I do feel strongly that our youngest learners who don't have the choice to be vaccinated should be in masks in schools. All of these institutes of highest authority have said, they strongly recommend that everyone in K-12 wear masks. And I keep thinking back to, we just had a, a recent surgery in my family, that was an elective surgery, that was strongly recommended. And so, we did that, because that was what was most important to that person's health, and this is how I, I feel it's the same application, this is what's strongly recommended for everyone's health in our district. And I, as a board member, am not willing to have the death of one student on my hands, and I feel like that's what will possibly happen, at least for our youngest learners.
So, I have a question into some of your questions, so, in reference to, I mean, if the whole point of wearing masks is to not protect the person wearing it, but to protect the other people from the person that might have COVID, right, because it's mine, right? Why aren't we masking the host, why are we only talking about K through six? Why don't we mask the high school? Because if you're vaccinated, you can still give it. That's been proven. I mean, we've got, actually, the studies would show now, over the past three weeks, that more vaccinated people are getting COVID than unvaccinated people. So, if we're concerned about our students, why aren't everybody, why aren't we talking about everybody now?
For K-12.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're going to, we shouldn't pick apart some recommendations, you know, and say, well, they have their choice, because the reality is, yeah, I have my choice, I'm vaccinated, but I might be in another room with somebody that doesn't have the choice, and I can give them COVID, and the school allowed me to do it, because they didn't make me wear a mask. They let me have my right to make that decision. So, if we're going to follow recommendations, we need to follow recommendations, I think, for all of them. I think recommendations, I think they're leaving it open in that way, and not mandating it, because I don't think they have the constitutional right to mandate it. I think we have the personal responsibility to choose what is best for our family, and our Michigan constitution even states that, that parents have a right to do that. Now, we can make that decision, but, you know, I'm just saying, in, in reference to what somebody posted earlier, when they said four-point-two million children have tested positive for COVID so far, and point zero-zero-eight have died, which is unfortunate, but it is true that four-hundred-and-eighty kids died of the flu in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. And we did not mandate flu vaccines, that was in one year. We didn't say, "You can't come to school with the vaccine," or "You can't come to school with a mask," so, I just want to really just, and the reason why I'm a little bit more passionate is because I feel like the minute the Delta variant is gone, we're going to have Omega. Are we going to have, it's going to be another variant, at some point, we are going to have to have people responsible for their own personal health, and, I mean, we're going to have the same, if they left vaccines in the next month for K through six, what are we going to do? What if only ten percent of the children are vaccinated? We're going to be in the same position, we're unvaccinated children are going to be able to spread it, or vaccinated children aren't going to be able to require to wear masks, but they can spread it just the same. And I, I mean, there's a lot of commentary on this, but there still is not a ton of science. I mean, there's, I can find a thousand articles at Wall Street Journal, and New York Times, in reference to requiring or needing to wear masks to slow the spread, to protect others from you, but there's not a lot of case study in whether or not it helps. So, I'm not saying that it's not serious, and I'm not saying that we're not going to have kids that have COVID, I think it's going to be still a struggle year. I'm just not sure that there's any science that says, I find more science supporting children having a better educational experience without masks, and there probably still going to be COVID positives than wearing masks, so.
So, I think for me, it's not necessarily about, I would hate to have a child, whenever our children are six, it's horrible, regardless of what it is, they get a cold, and they're up on ninety-four. I would hate to have a child that is from anything. For me, right now, the celebration and talking about, you know, we were here a year ago, talking about, are we going to be in school or out of school? And I want to celebrate the fact that we're all in school, we're going to school, and I want to keep our kids in school. So, for me, it's a matter of, for, for me to draw the line between preschool and sixth grade, one, because they don't have the opportunity to get the shot. Two, they're kind of at that age where, you know, telling them to stay three or six feet apart, to wash their hands, is a little more difficult. Where with our older kids, we can kind of do that, and have, set those expectations a little higher. I want to keep our kids in school, so if we have our kids, if we have any kids unmasked in a classroom, that does kind of tie our hands up, how we go through, who quarantines, how we shut the classroom, how many people are exposed, do we know who's exposed? That was kind of a nightmare scenario last year, it's the same scenario we would have to go, and we're going to have kids not in school. So, if this is going to help us keep kids in school, that's kind of also wearing land that kids are going to be able to stay in school, hopefully, not going to work, longer. So, I'm totally fine, Julie, if you want to have a pre-K through twelfth grade mask thing, I'm just looking at, our youngest kids don't have the opportunity to get the shot, that seems to be the concern level, and the majority of concern level, and it's harder to keep those kids apart, and I feel like that's where we might have more kids out of our district, if we, if we haven't operated. So, I also do want to clarify something, and I could be wrong, you had mentioned the I S D's program, like the, the thing that made him up? Um, it, that is, the I S D, because of all of their programs, that is their protocol, that is their plan that they're going to follow, we, unless we have a child there, then they'll have to follow that, but we don't have to follow that, what they put out there.
Well, we follow it Ingham County, but I just assumed that the I S D would have talked into Linda Vale on what the protocol was going to be.
Yeah, I mean, the case with masks, quarantine, that just expands the mental distance, you can be in a school-associated case, so, that's, that's the major, as far as masks go, important.
So, is that three feet?
So, it expands the sense with a mask.
Okay, and are we going to, so, if they have?
It's less than three feet, um, but, uh.
Okay, so, they're just being extremely cautious that they're requiring masks and still quarantining?
I mean, that's mainly, I mean, that's, you know, that was, I know, an issue that was, a lot of folks are very angry about last year, to include, you know, at least a couple issues with athletics and some other things, and that's, that's it, I, you know, I can't, I can't change that.
Oh, and I understand that, that's why I just didn't know, I mean, you guys all, I didn't talk to Linda Vale, because to me, I feel like Linda Vale should be open with the public, and not just the people in the private, so, I had no interest in talking to her. If she was going to, you know, go on Channel Six News and talk, I was going to take her for that value, and she was saying, "Recommended," and that's where we're going at. But, you know, so maybe that conversation had been had, I don't know, since we're not cohorting during lunch, or we're not doing other things, are we going to be, I would just hate for us to be in a position where we go mask, and four weeks into school, or five weeks into school, we have classes that are shutting down, and then we're kind of with Mrs. Schaefer's comment of, "What do we do with these kids that are now quarantined? There's no online option, they're twelve days out of school, we put mask mandated," you know, but we weren't able, you know, they're not mask mandated outside, I don't think, when they're outside for playgrounds, so they can be around each other without masks, that's for the fifteen minutes, you know, so, there's, to me, masking doesn't seem to be the edge-all of keeping our kids in school.
Absolutely.
And I see lots of ways in which we can still get the call from Linda Vale that says, "Your classroom has to quarantine, or you have to have all these kids," or, it even now makes it harder, I think, because now we're going to have to keep track of every kid during recess that doesn't have their mask on, and see if they've been within, you know, one person for six feet for fifteen minutes, or in the lunchroom while they're eating, if they're across the table from somebody, so.
I think masking is the best tool to keep our kids in in-person learning at this point in time, from the data that I have seen.
Well, and maybe, Adam, maybe you could touch that, obviously, we don't have control of our quarantine, but if it did happen, that students need to be out, what is, what is going to happen for their continued learning?
Yeah, so, that's, that's been a major discussion of our, from the administrators.
Read the question.
Yeah, so, the, the question was, what happens when students need to quarantine this year? So, unfortunately, this is something that we have a lot of experience with from last year, and, so, all the buildings have something called a sudden change plan, and that's the series of events that would take place to support either a group of learners or an entire classroom, hopefully, whatever happens to be more than that, but we do have that plan scaled out to a building level, to support students if they need to learn from home. There's quite a bit of flexibility at the secondary level, in terms of what they, they can do, the technology piece is one, but actually, K-12, last year, one of the things that was done was all the asynchronous lessons that were built, we have those as well, so, so, and most likely, and, this is being refined over the course of this week, and will continue to be refined throughout the rest of the year, but we have a nice menu of options to support students, from the technology to asynchronous lessons, obviously, direct teacher support, and with using those in conjunction with each other, that's our plan for how to address that. I think lunch was brought up as well, that's been a major focus for us, in terms of how we're providing the most mitigation at lunch as possible, so, at the elementary campus, in past years, you would have multiple grade levels eating in the cafeteria together. This year, there's a new lunch schedule that has been revised, or been created, that just puts one grade level at a time in the cafeteria, so that allows us to space those students out to a maximum extent we can. At the secondary buildings, I don't want to commit to anything, because there's still quite a bit of work going on it, but we're looking at some alternative lunch plans as well, and we have a number of questions that we need to continue to try to solve, but there's an extensive amount of conversation and work going on to see how we can best mitigate any chances of an outbreak at lunch at the secondary buildings as well.
And I just, I guess I want some help, or clarify this, so, I did have someone, we did also get another question about if we can flip to online learning, then why can't we offer that hybrid, or that online learning, like we did last year? And my guess is, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we have kids that had quarantine for like two weeks, and we switched it up online learning, we still have enough kids in seats to count, or at least we count.
You're talking about a hybrid, like an option for the whole year, what we did last year?
Yeah, so, one, so, someone asked us, if we have a class that has quarantine, and we offer, and we flip to that online version for them, why can't we offer an online version year-round?
So, we did an extensive amount of work with our educators last spring, in terms of the results we saw, both in-person and remotely, and the results were just both quantitative, qualitative, even in the goal, that the best place for students to be, the most impactful teaching and learning footplace we could work in for classrooms. I mean, it wasn't even close, I mean, it's not just academics, it's social, it's emotional, it's all the supports they bring and provide to kids. So, you know, our staff obviously has a great range of opinions on all these issues, since the pandemic has come up, just like society and our community in general. That was an area where they were, you know, pretty much united, that this was, this was something we needed to get the kids back in school. So, we really, at that point, as educators, this is the thing we know, we really felt that we need to put every possible effort into having the best in-person experience for our students this fall, right from the get-go. We still have those contingency plans in place, there's menus of options that the schools can choose from to support families, distribute devices, all those types of things, but we, as an educational community, feel strongly that we need to be in school. I'll also speak specifically to the hybrid model, that is immensely challenging as a new teacher to pull off, I know, I know, it looks good, but when you're trying to manage and attend to the students who are in your class, and students that are remote at the same time, you know, in spurts, depending on the class, it might be feasible here and there, but doing that systemically, it, it's just not, it's not impactful or effective. So, again, we have menus to choose from for contingencies, but doing that over the course of another school year. So, um, again, we have menus to choose from for contingencies, but doing that over the course of another school year, um, was, was not something that, uh, educators in the district, um, thought would be impactful or effective.
And I guess the last comment is Livingston County, right? They've decided not to do any masking, I think, so our neighbors to the east have no schools masked, so, not all of our neighbors have.
Guys, just, um, I also, uh, want to remind you that Adam does still, I mean, Adam still does have, um, I don't know, I don't know if he wants to have the board power, but-
Authority.
Authority, there we go, that's good. Um, we still have given Adam the authority, because if something, you know, if something happens the first week of school and we have to do something, we can't, we can't wait for a meeting, we can't wait, you know, we have to post a meeting for so long, and get a meeting together if you're about to do that. So if there is ever something, um, that comes up or happens or whatever, he's making the decision immediately and then voting in for it, you know, so we have given him that, um, that level. Um, I guess the question is, is, you know, we start school on Monday, teachers start tomorrow. Are we ready to move, it sounds like, to look at, uh, some type of, as Monica so bravely said, I hate setting aside the rules.
Did, did I say?
But-
Did I say? There we go.
Uh, well, we do start school on Monday, and, uh, is it time to-
No, this was-
Is it time to move to our next part of this plan, the next layer, the next section, um, which talks about masking?
Before we make a vote, I would like to, if, since we are voting tonight and setting aside the rules, I would, I want masking to be on every agenda moving forward. I want this reevaluated every two weeks. I want us to give a vote on it every two weeks, because if Delta is, passes, like, you know, they said it is, and we're four to six weeks behind Europe, and now they're past Delta, if we're past Delta, I don't want to have our kids in masks for a whole semester, because Adam feels that we voted on it, so I think it's something where we should have it, huh?
It has been on the agenda every time, we've had to approve our COVID plan during every meeting, and we have a-
No, we do it once a month.
And it's a matter of what category we're in in that plan right now.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I know, you know, I know this is really hard, but I do have to ask the audience, we're having a hard time hearing up here, so I'm going to ask you to save your comments. We have another substantive comment at the end, and you guys are all more than welcome to, um, stand up and do that.
You already made a decision. We know what you're going to decide.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
No, I, I just had a hard-
Or Amanda, sorry.
I was saying that we always have to approve our COVID preparedness plan at every meeting, and the, the current plan we have in place, it's, what we need to determine is what category we are in right now.
But that's not, we don't determine what category, the health department does.
Well, as of Friday, we are now in a substantial cases in our county, in, in Ingham County. So yes, the threat level has changed since our last meeting.
And I, and I'm just saying, in two weeks, it may be different.
It may be, I agree.
And I want Adam to have the comfortability to move us out of masks, if we move back to a low, or, you know, low risk.
And Adam, I might be speaking out of turn, but I have been under, you've had almost daily communication with Dr. Vale about-
Yeah, so we, well, yes, whether I went to or not, yes, um, the, uh, um, you know, we did downgrade over the course of the summer, um, and that's the posture that we've been in for the last month, and so, you know, again, in our, in our plan, uh, we just reiterate that, as of that point, we were in that same posture that we've been in, um, which is that masks were recommended, but we have not been requiring them for many weeks, um, for, for, we're going to use China athletics, et cetera, so. Um, but we also tried to put forth a plan that, you know, it's, it's as much specificity as we can give, given of a lot of the uncertainties, that this shows that, you know, we could scale this up and dial it down. You know, most recently, we dialed it down, um, that's always the goal. But, um, that's kind of how we got to the, the level that we, we've been in.
Anything else? Okay, we are, uh, do, is there a motion to set aside the rules? Because, um-
Motion to set aside the rules and put this to action?
What do you guys work for?
Second. Um, I believe this has to be a roll call, is that correct, Kathy? Okay, Sarah, or Amanda?
Okay, uh, look, Amanda, yes, Chris?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Sarah, I'm sorry, yes, Sarah?
Yeah.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with four to watch.
Okay, so can we add this as an action, if I need to? Action item, it was go under, I guess that'd be helping, where is this going to go under when we approve this stuff?
Well, if it needs to be under eight, we will call vote items.
So are we going to?
You don't have, you don't have to-
You don't have to, it could be letter Z, correct?
Yeah, it could be letter Z.
Or C, separate action items, it's-
C one, it's C one.
C one, okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is written.
Second.
Any discussion?
Now, what is, is that this right here?
No, no, that's minutes.
So right now?
Oh, the minutes, okay.
The minutes right here, sorry.
So we're just moved up, okay, so we're doing the first, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
So is there any discussion on approval of the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we not have any roll call votes, and on reception, separate action items, do I have a motion for moving the plan? A motion for the mask plan, could we just do roll call? Anybody have-
Motion to approve, um, masking those in, are we saying K through PK five?
That's what I had a question about, though.
Yeah, we need to determine, was it PK five or PK six? Because I heard both, in the conversation. I think, I, I think it might be challenging in six.
It's going to be very difficult.
It's challenging for six in the sense that it's separate.
So whatever you want to choose, not only PK five?
I would say five.
Okay?
Okay.
So a motion to, um, motion to approve a mask mandate for those in PK five, until such time that we can-
Wait, can I, so can I add just an instructional area? Um, so, I, so I would like to add masking for pre-teen highs in all instructional areas for students, visitors, and staff.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion?
So, uh, during school hours, is that included in the syllabus, during school hours?
During school hours.
Yeah, I would say during school hours, we need to add that.
I just want to make sure I got it, I need to add to your motion, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you're-
Any other discussion? Our neighbor? Any, any opposed?
Opposed.
Um, okay, board goals, we have our board goals there, you guys can read those. Correspondence, we have some reservation matters, um, on there. Um, and now we are back to our second time of citizen comments. Again, this is a time for you to address the board, you have three minutes, and you can now address, it doesn't have to be just agenda items, it could be anything that you would like to have discussed. So just make your way to the podium, give your name and address, and I will find you there. Oh, I guess we can give it us if you'd rather just send that.
Are we ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Name's Dan Reins, nine twenty-three Williams, have two kids. Um, I didn't address this earlier, because it was a non-agenda item, but, uh, we're, my wife and I are very frustrated with the way some things have gone at the, uh, at the elementary school. I know, uh, we're all, for parts of, going into three school years now, we've all been in this COVID zone. But we, seems like we should be getting better about dealing with some COVID stuff. Uh, the elementary school dropped the ball with some pretty serious stuff for my kid in November of last year, and then, uh, all of a sudden, he, he has serious anxiety issues, and a thing that helps him a lot is when he gets to see what's going on before time. And all of a sudden, we decided that, uh, you no longer get an orientation, you get to watch a video. My kid sat in the corner and cried for twenty minutes when he found out he wasn't going to get to go in and walk through the school, find out where his class is, and meet his teacher. Um, I don't understand that, you know, um. I, I run large events, to me, that seems like a simple solution. If you're worried about too large of a crowd, spread it out. Why do we have to have K through five in one hour? The teachers only have to be there one hour, whether it's Monday or whether it's Wednesday. Instead of moving it to virtual, make the easy solution, if you're worried about too big of a crowd. You know, um, that in addition to, I, I addressed the, the other things last year, but it seems like we're, we're constant, the, the big deal was, we had a, we had a big shift with my son, and then right after the big shift, we canceled parent-teacher conferences, instead of moving them to online. We just said, we're not going to have them, and now we're moving orientation to virtual. These things don't make any sense to me. I, we, we need to do better, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi there, my name is Marcy Shepler, I'm from the area, graduated from Williamson High School. I've had two children that I've raised in this city that have graduated from the high school, and I now have a granddaughter that I'm highly concerned about. I've never been with myself, two children, I've never came to a meeting, never felt the need to come to a meeting, until now with my granddaughter. It really, really bothers me to see where Williamson is right now. The board members, which I will definitely be making sure I understand some names of the board members. Um, I don't feel that you, I think you've overstepped your boundaries.
Yes.
Absolutely overstepped your boundaries, when it is factual that whether you've had the shot or not, the vaccine, our kids can't get, this is what I'm hearing, the va, they can't get the vaccine, small kids can't get the vaccine, so they're at higher risk. Whether you've had the vaccine or not, you still spread COVID. That is the information that's out there. The sad thing is that, depending on what information you're listening to, there are doctors who say this, there are doctors who say that. They talk about the mask, masks aren't no good. Every single bit of information regarding this COVID, depending on what channel you're on or who you're listening to, is completely different. And when I am now at fifty-eight years old, looking at a day when they are going to tell me whether I'm going to vaccinate my kid or not, whether my child, what my child has to do, I don't feel if my child, me raising my child, grandchild, is more of my concern than it is your concerns. And having, saying something about whether this, you know, if one child dies, that truthfully is just truly absolutely ridiculous coming out of the mouth, that that is why we're going to mandate masks, they're going to sit in a lunchroom, as you all said, they're going to leave the school, go into Walmart, go to their friends, do all of these things that they're going to do without a mask. But yet, in here, we are going to set the rules for my kids and tell me what I'm going to do with my kids. And I do not agree with that at all, and you better believe, when it comes voting time for the school board, they, we did surveys, we have surveys that show how the people of this community feel, and the numbers were literally half-concerned compared to double that amount that were not concerned. Yet you five, or however many of you are, minus you, the smartest one on this board, in my opinion. And I'm just going to let you know, I'm extremely disappointed. Been here my whole life, and I am extremely disappointed in every single one of your votes tonight, minus her. Thank you.
Lori Janacek, um, I have not met Linda Vale, but I have taken a look at posts from Linda Vale, and so I'm going to not read between the lines, I'm just going to share what, what Linda Vale has said. "I think they are holding a special meeting on Monday, please be there in numbers. They need to hear from you more than the anti-maskers, organize, be there." That does not sound like a disinterested, "Look at the facts." You know, when I hear things like, "We think masks were the reason," you're exactly right, Sarah, that's all we can do is think. So I think the burden of proof falls back onto the self-proclaimed experts to say, "Here, Adam, this is why we're recommending it." And we missed a huge chance, I, I hope that our neighbors do stay mask-free so we can take a look, because that's not what anybody's doing, well, people are doing it, but sadly, that's being pushed aside. Let's take, it's easy, right? It's easy. Let's compare places that have been really, really strict on masks versus those who have not, and this has been done. And I think that's why very reasonable people are saying, "What in the world is going on?" And then for Linda to push and push and push, well, congratulations, you've done Linda's dirty work for her.
Right.
And my respect for her has gone down immensely. When I read things like this, so, I'm saddened, I think it's very wise to relook at it, right? We make choices that we go back later in retrospect and we probably would have approached differently. Absolutely, welcome to the human club. But I do hope, how about this, I strongly recommend that you do follow that wisdom of retaking a look at things and getting actual facts versus people just telling you thou shalt. That shouldn't be good enough for you. It's not good enough for me as a parent, and I know it's not going to be good enough for those parents of little kids now, that'll have to cover up their face all day long.
That's horrible.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Christine McGoren, you'll have to bear with me, I just jotted a few things down. Um, I was looking online today at some of the board information, and it states that the board shall seek to achieve the following goals. Part of that is every board member should represent open-mindedly the entire district. What I'm hearing is that you represented your own opinions, based on something that may not even be factual. Okay, you're not doing your jobs correctly. Personal responsibility is not social and community responsibility. We are responsible for our own selves, and as parents, responsible for our children. We cannot automatically assume that people are infected. To do so, we are assuming everyone is a potential boogeyman, and that's what we're teaching our kids.
Right, yeah.
Common sense about personal safety. Masks cover and touch the nose and mouth. Contaminated hands, sorry, if ever it's a boogeyman, you touch something, your hands are contaminated, and you touch your mask, Adam, I've seen you sit up there constantly fiddle with your mask.
Everybody did.
Okay, if you touch something that has COVID on it, the kids, you're making the kids wear these all day long.
Right.
Okay, unless you're going to constantly, every time they touch their mask, give them a new mask, instruct them on how to wear it. Um, mask mandates, uh, people speak about that as being a kindness and caring about your fellow citizens. No, it's a symbol of fear. It's fear of contracting it, it can be fear of giving it. There is no proof that masks prevent contraction or spreading COVID. Common sense says, if they did, why didn't it take care of the problem, and the statewide mandate was in place? Why do we still have cases of COVID? Why were people still dying of COVID? Why are we sending his, kids home from school and they got COVID? America is a country founded on freedom. I understand that many people are fearful. I think that is regretful, especially if their fear is not based on facts. But our freedom as Americans, a personal choice for ourselves, and our children should not be curtailed due to the fear of others. As parents, teachers, and administrators, it is our job to do our best to help children feel unafraid- feel unafraid and secure, we should not be projecting our own fears onto them. The death rate for children five to eighteen years old is point zero 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 five nine percent, or fifty-nine per ten million, that was based on information I got today, um, from the CDC and the population of children six to seventeen in two thousand and nineteen. An irrational fear, okay, so that's an irrational fear, that's a very tiny number, I don't even know how to represent that. An irrational fear is called a phobia, phobia should not be projected onto our children. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Sharon Anway, four three five Frost Road, um, little disappointed that she didn't go to the K through twelve, very happy you went through, uh, to K through five, thank for, thank you to all of you for the work you're putting in and the work you're doing. Um, one thing I would like to, um, mention and have you perhaps take a look at is band and choir for middle school and high school, you've got seventy kids in a class, in choir, they're singing, so that stuff's going everywhere, in band, it's spit. Um, a same concept, um, all this year, we heard about sports, we never heard about performing arts, our kids lost an entire year, there was no band, there was no choir, there were no festivals, there were no marching band, there was nothing for these kids. I'm asking you to please take a look at the performing arts and do what you can to keep it so these kids can do what they need to do. If they need to be nat, masked, put them in mask, let the teachers, I don't know, can the teachers even say, "I need to have masks?", I don't know, I don't know what, what they can do. I'm just asking you to please take a look at that, it's different than a regular classroom, it's seventy kids, it's a completely different thing, and we really, really don't wanna take that away from our kids again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Monica Schaefer, um, I'm, I'm very disappointed, I'm not surprised, um, because, like I said, I knew it was gonna happen, I've been at these board meetings for six years, I've seen a lot of dirty play, I've seen a lot of dirty play, tonight was probably one of the worst, you guys are all part of it, you should be responsible, you did something that you knew you shouldn't have done, that you, you lectured, all of you guys lectured Scott Gaffner, because I think he wanted to purchase, was it computers? I don't know, you guys can correct me, and you sat there, Nancy, and you told him, "Scott, I've been on this board so long, and I, we have very few times set aside the rules until you've been president," you just wanted to nail him, and until, and then you said, "I am not setting aside the rules, we've done it too much." And what did you do tonight? You set aside the rules with two board members missing, that was dirty.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
And there are elections, there are consequences to elections.
Right.
And everybody in this room understands that there are two seats available in two thousand twenty-two. Two seats available in two thousand twenty-two. And that's all we can do, that's what it comes down to, is there's consequences to election, you had a wonderful opportunity to prove to your community today that you would listen to them. I think, what, what one is it, Alex, or, uh, you can tell me here, what number is it for, um, goals, provide high-quality education experience, strengthen communications with students, parents, and staff and community, these are board goals. You had a great opportunity tonight.
Right.
The people spoke. We did, we told you, we told you, our kids told you, you had three students stand up here and tell you, but instead, you did, Linda Vale's worked for her because she couldn't do it herself, she couldn't stand up and say, "No." So she took every one of you guys in the back room and told you what to do, and you did it.
Right.
You didn't stand up for us, the community, Williamson Community Schools, you have an obligation to do that, you're an elected official.
That's right.
There's just consequences, and just like I tell my children, there's actions and there's consequences to your actions, and I'd love to bail you out from them, but I don't, because I'm a parent, I'm raising children, you guys were elected to do a job.
Right.
You had a great opportunity tonight, and you wasted it.
My name's Alan Berger, I'm a father of two, and I invest in about seventy-five kids here in the community. I just wanna say thanks for letting me have this time, and I just wanna say that your job is not easy, and I think there's one thing that we can all agree on, is we care about kids, and we all want what's best for the kids. And another thing that we can all agree on is, since this has all began, it's probably been the most divisive, divisive thing of all time for communities, our country, because we care about our kids, and on one side, we care about our kids in this way, and we love them, and we wanna protect them, and we want them to grow healthy and thrive in this way, and this is the way that we believe to do it, and then on the other side, the same thing, where we end up going at each other and not, like, disagreeing and becoming combative, and we get nowhere. The one thing that I want you guys to hear from me tonight is to hear the heart of the parents, something that is growing at a very high and fast rate is depression, it's been growing for years for our young people, depression, and if you have a kid, you've been hanging out with kids, you see the sadness on their face, you see the, the need to be in relationship and in close proximity to people, interacting, they need it.
Right.
Our, as a parent, I worry about my kids, and, and where they are with some of those things, the weight that they're carrying, the depression that is growing, and the parents in the room, that's part of their heart, they're, they're growing scared for their kids, because Williamson's very fortunate. Some other communities in the United States not so fortunate. It's not televised very much, but they've taken their life because of just the weight that they're carrying, not being able to be around their friends, and, and that brings us to this, you know, this decision, like, not being able to interact with their, you know, face to face, and they're like, it, it almost dehumanizes them. And so I wanna say this, we're playing this what-if game, and I don't think anyone here in the room is to say, "Hey, if you do A, B, and C, I guarantee that you live." You can't control, there, those things, life is out of our hands, like, there's a certain amount, it's out of our control, and we have to live life, because statistically speaking, if we're gonna go on statistics and, and, and just say, "Hey, there's a risk here, there, and there," you're not gonna drive, you're not gonna go walk down the road, statistically speaking, there's a risk in everything. But if we say, "Well, what if we go ahead and we don't mask kids, something might happen?" What if you do mask them, and depression grows, and one takes their own life?
Right.
Will they get to then turn back and say, "The blood was on your hands because the parents shared their heart about their kids and being concerned for their kids and depression, and you ignored it."
And you ignored it.
That is something we have to understand.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Um, board member reports a request. Amanda?
I have a request, I, um, haven't been on the board in very long time, I know this has come up many, many times, but I would like a legal opinion on whether people have to give their name and address, or maybe if we stop that, and I just, if you could provide that, whichever, I would appreciate that.
No, I think that's a good idea. Any other board reports or requests?
I do have a question, so, do we still follow that monthly requirement by the state to give a mitigation plan, cause I know that Amanda had said that we do.
Yeah, so the, the COVID, whatever thing was we had to do last year, it's no longer a requirement, um, but there's a meeting the board can implement its own processes, obviously that was, that was a mandate from the state we had to.
Well, I think we should put that on our, to be able to, that we have a COVID update at our board meetings, so that we, as he's getting information from the county, that we have information to make decisions.
You know, just because it was floated that we're moving to that next plan, doesn't take away, that's, so, you know?
Well, I think the only problem with that is it is kind of moving, right? It's not, it's a little different than the way Ingham County poses their mitigation as far as numbers, it, I felt like the, the red, I mean, it's a good plan, but now after looking at Ingham County's new, you know, when I was really looking at their website and their plan and how they put like the numbers of like a certain amount, and they're a week behind, so I know they're gonna come out with new numbers tomorrow, so, um, but it, I've kind of felt like the other next steps ups would be more of Ingham County pushing on because of, um, quarantining, or your, your classroom has all these positives, you gotta mask for two weeks or do something like that, so.
Right, and I don't wanna see, I mean, I agree, I think this is something that we keep talking about, I don't wanna see our kids in masks forever either, if our, if we get our kids in school and numbers don't go anywhere, then I think we need to ask the leave visitors and find out what is happening and what's going on.
Thank you.
I agree with that. That's a good idea. Um, I do wanna remind people, tomorrow is opening day, I think we are, if you can make it, uh, seven forty-five, right, at the high school?
Yeah, seven forty-five, eight o'clock.
Is there a specific?
It's gonna be a grand old time.
Comments, okay.
Welcoming all of our staff back, so anyone and everyone that can, uh, be there, that would be great, and the welcome reception. Seems like I've spent a really long time to keep on that. Can I hear there's a dance? There is, dance, dancing.
No dancing.
Did you hear that? But I'm pretty sure it's on the agenda. What is that, that, what do you think it was? He was practicing today, I saw him, it's gonna be a good time for all. Um, okay, again, I'd like to thank everyone, there's a lot of information coming in the last, last two weeks, lots of correspondence, lots of information, lots of data stuff, so I did me for fun, we were here and, uh, being ready to go, and we all have a, um, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, good night.
Thank you.